I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen minutes up to December 18th, 2018, as written.
You have to abstain.
I second that, I'll abstain.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
One abstention.
I'd also like to make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen minutes from January 2nd, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
Another abstention.
And another motion to accept the Board of Selectmen minutes from January 14th, 2019.
January 14th?
January 14th.
After 29th?
29th is after the 14th.
I don't have the 14th.
Yeah.
I will second the...
You want to see him first?
Yeah, I just stand in front.
It was our, um, I think our work, to go on the outside of the motion.
Okay. Second?
Yep. All in favor?
Aye.
Stand.
Abstention.
Also like to make a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen minutes from January 29th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I abstain now. Thank you.
We also have a motion to accept the Board of Selectmen minutes from February 13th, 2019.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One abstention.
That is it for minutes.
Correspondence, you get quite a list there, John.
Okay, correspondence, March 5th, 2019, the office received the monthly reports of our police and fire chiefs and for Cert E N for the month of Jan- ending January 2019. In addition, the office received the monthly reports of the fire and police chiefs for the month ending February 2019. The office will receive notice from Dr. Castigian that Quaybog Regional School Committee has confirmed the appointment of Sherry Sumter as the new Director of Finance and Operations effective January 31st. The office received a request from the Board of Assessors requesting the Board of Selectmen consider expanding the policy as outlined in Town General Bylaw, Article 10, 15, to include real estate, personal motor vehicle excise, sewer, ambulance fees, et cetera.
Noted.
That will, we will have further discussion again.
CMR PC has given notice that traffic council will be conducted on weekdays at between April and November at various locations throughout town.
They do this every so often to, um, it goes into some information with the CMNPO as far as like, you know, tip, transportation improvement programs.
Historical Commission Chair Sylvia Buck provided a written account of travels of Henry Knox's retrieval of cannons from Port Ticonderoga, New York, to Boston, which rescued the besieged city of Boston. She also provided information regarding the upcoming meeting, which will be held on Wednesday, March 20th, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the John Oliver Transit Center in Greenfield. Topic of discussion will be the adaptive reuse of historic buildings. More information can be obtained by contacting the Selectmen's office. The Rotary Club of the Brookfields will be hosting a pancake breakfast fundraiser at the Senior Center on Sunday, April 7th, 2019. Cost is $8 per adult, $5 for kids 10 and under. The Warren, West Warren Water District has partnered with Lowe's Home Improvement Center for a Fix a Leak Week. This will run from March 18th through the 24th, and water district residents are eligible to receive a 25% discount on plumbing supplies to fix a leak, replace showerheads, faucets, or toilets. In order to receive the discount, you must bring a copy of your water bill.
Paul?
Yeah, actually, we should give a shout out to Carol at the Warren Water District. She's the one who spearheaded this. She actually read it, this is something that he do in some town in Colorado. She wrote it in a newspaper article, so she partnered with, um, West Warren Water District and contacted Lowe's and hoping for a 10% discount, but they gave back with a 25, so...
Could be significant.
Quite substantial.
The office received notice that pending final legislative approval, the town will receive $288,125 in Chapter 90 Local Transportation Aid Funding for fiscal year 2020. Town of Palmer will be hosting a passenger rail study.
Charrette.
On Saturday, March 16th, from 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon. This charrette will be facilitated by Dr. John Mullen for the Center of Economic Development at the University of Mass in the Amherst. This charrette will be focused on the strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats as they relate to development of a passenger rail stop in Palmer.
That was also forwarded to us, just for the simple fact that we do have the old train station and, you know, should that ever come to the U again. It'd be interesting to attend.
And that is it for correspondence. Out of breath.
A lot.
Alrighty, amended notice of right of first refusal for a piece of carpet on Lewis.
So we did this a couple of weeks ago, well, actually, well, not a couple of weeks. It was back in December that the board approved the, um, uh, the right of first refusal on the property on Little Rest Road. They have amended that. The original, um, notice was for 37 acres. They have decreased that down to 19 acres, so if the board wants to exercise their option, it's just a vote to amend. Signatures will have to be done in front of the board itself.
I have a motion. Excuse me.
I want a motion to accept the amendment, the right of first refusal on the property located at Parsley, 3.3, and Assesors Math 11, which is in there, 19 for 3 acres, now from 37, to amend it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now, the host community agreement, which is next on the agenda, you guys have that in your binders, and I sent it out to electronically to take a look at. Some of the things in here that the board needs to discuss and go over. So they have to vote to accept. Or if there's anything else that you want to negotiate.
You found it, Shannon?
I think, uh, legal has gone through this with a fine tooth comb, and I accept their recommendations.
There we go.
Uh, it's some money, I mean, it's some money. It's, uh, we're gonna make a heck of a lot of money over there. I'm a little flirty on the amounts that are in here.
What, dollar wise?
Yeah. I'd like more, but it's just my personal opinion, you know, council's done.
Well, you know, as, as everybody is aware, you know, this was something that has been obviously in the news for the last couple of years. It did go before the town voters, the voters approved that we go forward with the thought of entertaining some of these companies. We did proceed with that action, and as John says, you know, most of the time it was, we turned it over to the lawyers to look out for the town of Warren's best interest. This is the final packet. It's 12 pages long. Most of it is legal terminology, security, a lot of, uh, stuff that just goes into a package like this. But the long and short of it is, is as Dario says, you know, we do receive a yearly sum of $100,000 as hosting this, these new businesses. That runs in effect, this agreement runs in effect for a period of five years, so that is, uh, a total of a half million dollars in that five-year period. And then it is subject to renegotiation after that term limit is up. They are, we are to be paid in quarterly payments. And like I say, this, this copy is public record, it is available for anybody's review. But that's where we stand with this now, that they are, I guess, getting set to, uh, step up the operation. I know there is talk about another interested party buying the remainder of the rights property. We've heard scuttlebutt on that for a couple of months now, but from what I understand, it is getting close to fruition, and they are gonna come in with the same sort of project. But, uh, this is the end result from town council, and, uh, like I say, the cost to the town is zero, but the rewards are $100,000 for the next five years.
Well, as...
Can I just add, I'm sorry, can I add something? How did the 3%, the 3% of the wholesale value of marketable product produced by cultivation operations be struck out?
The, um, the company struck that, 3% is the max you can go on.
It's the max, but it's 100,000 or 3%.
Right, so council wanted, suggested 3%, but they struck out.
They struck out on 100.
So this is what the purpose of tonight's meeting is about, for the board to discuss it, whether they're acceptable for the 100,000, or if you want to go for the 3%.
I, me personally, speaking for myself, I'm okay with the minimum of 100,000 and going for the 3%. I think it's gonna be a very lucrative business for them, and I think the town could, town could benefit from the 3% of the total rather than just 100,000, my personal opinion.
Minimum of?
A minimum of 100,000 with, you know, the 3%, because it was worded in here, the amount of 100,000, or 3% of the wholesale value of the marketable product produced.
But the 3% is struck.
Correct.
So, again, it's up to the board. You have to keep in mind, it's not only medical, it's adult use, recreational marijuana that they're gonna be cultivating.
3% is gonna be the greater, my opinion, absolutely.
I would, yes.
That's why I would advocate for the 3% for even 2.5% or go back at over 100,000, 2.5%, whichever the greater, for the benefits of the town. I mean, they're gonna strike it out no matter what, they don't want to pay it. But I still think it's gonna be very lucrative for them, especially the first five years, until others start to emerge. They're gonna be the only doctor they show, or one of the...
Because I think you can look at the numbers that are out there from people that have already up and coming, and, you know, you're talking...
It's a drop in a bucket, a hundred grand.
You're talking big.
So could we send it back to them stating that we, you know, counter it for 2.5%? Or the 100, I'm just throwing it out there, guys, doesn't hurt to ask.
I don't...
I'm putting it out there.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
No problem asking. I thought that our legal had struck that, so...
So we'll send it back and ask for 2.5? The board negotiate 2.5 or 100,000, whichever the greater, per year for five. I mean, the rest of the language that's in here, like Mark stated, there's a lot of legal.
Yes.
Language, that's contract language, but I look at the first few paragraphs, which is the amounts, and what the town's gonna benefit from. That's probably the most important part for us.
Is the 5% late payment penalty that they would need to pay?
Which needs to be in there?
It isn't.
Yes. Yeah, besides the first, really, the first two pages, it's all legal jargon. But, you know, if we're gonna be the host and we have accommodated on, uh, yeah, I'd like to do a bigger piece of the pie.
Yeah, I mean, hey.
I mean, we, we, I, you know, I was talking to somebody last week, and it was suggested, you know, this would be a good opportunity to, uh, to earmark some of that funding for some of the projects that we've been putting off. I mean, you know, this kind of money, extra income could, you know... Worst one is with the town hall, or a piece of equipment for Tom, or a new cruiser, or all sorts of issues that, you know, this is basically found money. We're being rewarded for being a host immunity, Adam.
Just throwing it out there, I was kind of thinking the same thing. I know that there's been several communities that have done some of these agreements where they have been able to pick off a few capital planning projects and stuff with the help of these things, so certainly, in my opinion, that'd be something to look for. If they're willing to negotiate, to assist with, you know, pulling some of these projects that some of the departments have, it might be quite beneficial to use it that way, too. I know that, you know, North Brookfield has added some, you know, part-time and full-time shifts to their department, you know, for some of the solar money coming in and stuff like that. So it's certainly something to look for, you might be able to pick some of those projects off.
Because, you know, if you look at, at 100,000 minimum, so we go to 250, it could jump to 250.
Up to 500?
Yeah, I'm just saying.
So, you know, talking...
Instead of going right to a general fund immediately, you're working the yearbook for a few things.
$2.5 million in five years as basically found money that's, I mean, as I say, I, you know, from day one, I'm not here to make moral judgments, I'm just here looking out for the interests of the town. If somebody is willing to sit there and start a business, I will take the profits from it. I think it's, it's a no-brainer, quite honest with you.
The one thing that I would caution, though, is that the town would bear the burden of showing that, say, the 100,000 or the 2.5%, whatever is greater, you can't do it like a tax or a penalty, it's an impact fee.
Right.
So we have to show that this is going to offset some impact that we're receiving. So what's that impact gonna be? I don't know, you know? If they're up and running, do we have to add fire department personnel?
And消防s, which means that there are police and fire.
Right, so we have to be able to show that, to that way. I mean, we just can't throw a number out there, so...
So we're gonna leave it at that, and then tell them, we'll get back to them in a counter with, uh, with what we've talked about.
One of the things that's in place already that I'm sure the board is aware of is that we did receive, um, a check from the company, from, from Hillink, to offset the costs of legal expenses, and they're paying for their own negotiations.
Yes. And that also includes, I know we brought it once before, that, I think, there too, that it just adds a gravy, that they are gonna contribute $5,000 to the charities or esports teams at their discretion.
Yep.
Which will actually double the budget, because that's what the town gets. But that's also in this agreement here, that they will put in another $5,000 to these, these programs. So why don't we just leave it at that, then, Becky, and get back to them in a counter.
See what they say.
Yep.
See what they say. John, we have appointments, there's only Board of Appeals.
Only Board of Appeals, we have Kerry Spitt for a term expiring June 30th, 2020, and Richard Shabroski expiring on June 30th, 2021.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion here, and I'm all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We've been fortunate to have absolutely nothing at all come before this, only Board of Appeals in place. Sometimes it's just the way we like it.
I don't have the...
And we also have Rich Demetrius for conservation. Oh, oh, you know why I was holding it, because I don't have a term for him, you never go back to me. So Richard Demetrius for conservation.
Hey, we have Richard Demetrius for conservation.
He's a reappointed.
A reappointed?
I only did him till June 30th, I never heard back from Julius.
30th, 2019.
All in favor, aye?
We have the Rylanders, because I don't have a... Okay, we have a com- a peculiar license for Rylanders, which is a new establishment going down in West Warren.
So they have gone through, sorry, John, they have gone through the checklist that we set forward, for to help everybody in the...
Yep, added his inspections, uh, what's the Board of Health, Dawn went down.
I don't know much about it, but I think it's pizzan' riders again?
It's, uh, pizzan' and entrees, so...
Yeah, pizzan' entrees going into where the old, um, geez, he's used to, they, kind of, West Warren.
Yeah, the opening, uh...
Soft opening tomorrow.
Tomorrow morning, soft opening, so please support your local businesses.
So, do you have any, I'll second the motion to sign the calendar.
All in favor?
Aye.
Good luck.
Yeah, good luck.
Next I have is discussion on the use of the gym.
Hey, John.
Well, the board's at...
Let's start.
Kind of a point now where we have a slight disagreement. My belief is the, the building is a public building, and we should allow the residents to use the buildings when it's not being used for other purposes. The problem on hearing is that a lot of times we allow people to use the building, and it's left in not an appropriate condition. So doors left unlocked, uh, water running in the restrooms. So I understand the other board members' concerns, and my honor, concerns. I guess I'm looking at for a way of still allowing access to the building somehow. I guess we have a sign-in sheet, we have keys, but there's so many keys out right now that we don't have control over the keys, so anybody's in passing the key from one group to another group, so...
But it's not only that, like, last year, we had team after team, you know, they'd have blocks of time, and then, you know, I'm the first team, I hand it off to you.
Everybody's doing this, it's, I didn't do it, they did it, so...
And I come in, and the doors are open, and the lights are on, and...
Yeah, what the, what the board's concerned at this point is a security issue. You could have somebody come in here and literally trash this building in a half an hour and cause massive amounts of financial damage. But as John says, I have been, in my time sitting on this board, I have been a, a real advocate to letting the building be used because it is totally funded by the taxpayers. But just last week, Mrs. Sarah came in, somebody left the water running in the, in the ladies' room and flooded the ladies' room, so Mrs. Sarah cleaned it up. We come by, and the doors are left unlocked, the heat is turned up to 90 in the hallways, the lights are left on, and everybody always has an excuse, so, well, it wasn't me, it was the other guy. But I think until we find some way of controlling that, you know, I'm just afraid that we're gonna have the wrong element come in here and, literally, they could come in here and, in 10 minutes, knock every one of the computers off everybody's desk and, and have a million and a half dollars' worth of damage. That's the board's concern. We're not sitting here trying to limit it. We have encouraged a use, and we make very, very few rules. Lock the doors, shut the lights off. That's not asking a lot out of the people, especially when you're talking to supposedly responsible adults. But it just so happens that somebody comes in and gets the key, and then they pass it over to their friend, and, oh, make sure you give it to him when it's done. And all of a sudden, you, we have no control over who is coming in, who is coming out. And I, I, you know, John wanted it on the agenda because it's a legitimate concern of the board. We don't want to sit there and hogtie the people's hands for the use of their building, but somebody has to bear responsibility, and unfortunately, until this date, everybody that we, uh, I just gave permission to, somebody from the school, and, you know, it just didn't work out the way it was supposed to. So I don't know really what the solution is, but we just can't sit here and take this chance anymore. Mr. Corv, will you have something?
I'm thinking maybe you could hire a janitor, anytime there's an event, you could just make sure the building's okay, I don't know.
Who pays the janitor?
They would pay it, which is something I brought up earlier, that, you know, we're looking at staffing that position down the road. We don't have it yet, it wouldn't be until July 1st. But building use form, they want to use it, they're gonna have to pay for supervision, that person has to come back and check the building and lock it up. Are they gonna want to pay that? I, I doubt it, but that would be one of the requirements.
Do you charge the boy scouts to, you know, to...
I know, but, you know, we also have two schools, elementary and high school, have great-looking gyms that are used, that can be used. And I'd like to go back to the whole issue we have with the track years ago, how they weren't gonna let people walk their dogs and that on the track. You know, the public schools are also taxpayer-owned properties. Um, and it's sports-related, there's fields up there, there's the gym, so, you know, this is a very old building, an old gym, probably not the safest thing we have out there for some of the sports that they want to, some of the things they want to do down there. If it was parks or something like that, wanting to use it through the town, it's a different story. But when I coached, going down and getting the key, coming up here, locking up everything and bringing the key back, you know, I took great pride in that, you know, it's my responsibility. I asked to use the building, my team was here. None of them thinks that way nowadays. And it's just, it's unfortunate that we're burning money on heat, water, you know, the chance of theft and things going on in here, kids running through the hallways, they're not being supervised. Personally, myself, they gotta use the schools. I'm just tired of policing the building for after, after our events, that they're just not taking care of it.
So, what's your thoughts, John?
I think I already expressed my thoughts.
So how, how do we correct the, the situation, then?
I don't know.
I don't have all the answers, Mark, so...
Like I say, I, I've dealt with this for, this is my ninth year. And every year, we, we keep saying, yeah, this time's gonna work out, and for whatever reason, it, it just doesn't. Now, me, I would be in favor until we get some sort of a policy or some sort of control over this situation, just like Dario says, let them use the school till, uh, till May, until we can formulate some sort of a plan.
If, sorry, Mr. Chairman, if, if we do end up getting this constitutional position, that'd be a great help to police the building. And then, probably wouldn't have an issue with it. We'd have somebody here, we'd have eyes and ears here to help take care of the problem. So maybe we just put it off till May or June, and see what happens, and it gets funded, and now we have those, those mechanisms in place to, to protect the best interest of the building and the people using it.
Except the...
So it's, it's waiting a few months until the town meeting to see what happens in the vote, if we're gonna fund that or not.
I'd like to see the users of the building, the requestees come forward and talk to us, right? Because I don't, you know, I'm not one to punish the whole.
Well, that's what I mean, you know.
Because we have one bad apple on it, right? So I want the kids to have a place to get off the streets, to do what they need to do. We have baseball season coming up, you know, people are gonna want, and gyms at the other schools may not be able to accommodate everybody that wants to use it, so, um, I'd like to hear from some of the residents out there that are requesting we use and see what they have for potential solutions that maybe we can take under advisement. I'd rather just shut it all down.
So you want to just put a moratorium on it for, until we get some...
Until we start getting some feedback back as to how, how the people that want to use the area can help us police the area. If, if we do come to an agreement with them, and the agreement's violated, we have to shut that particular group down, you know, that's how I'd like to see it. People have to have responsibility, you know, we want to let them use the buildings, but they have to take some, some ownership of it.
Because we've been covered, we've, we've been covered at use over the years, it's just that...
I know, and I have been involved in the past year, so I can't speak for them, so...
Quarter past nine at night to make sure that the lights are off and the heat's turned down and the doors are locked. So we want to do that, put a moratorium on it, till, uh, do we hear from that? This is negative.
I know this has been going on since, probably, the, since the building was built, but once the board has been notified of what's going on, responsibility is very clear that should somebody sneak in here after the building's closed, raise hell, start a fire, do anything like that, the responsibility falls right back on the three of you because you've let them get away with it.
That's, that's the whole point of...
And I understand, I certainly would not want my grandkids to be denied this, but unless the people responsible have these keys, and that's another thing, who has a key now that can't be made? But I would say, all right, you must have two adults here at all times, one to go up with whoever goes up, make sure they come back. That would be my concern, somebody come in here, sneak it upstairs, and after everybody's gone, they're in the building, you walk out with whatever they wanted to, and the responsibility is... you walk out with whatever they wanted to and then responsibility is. Well, we talked about it, we let them try it again and you know the town meeting would be down on you three like dogs on meat, so. That's the way I look at it, I wouldn't stick my neck out any further, I would lay it out to them. Two adults all the time, one monitoring upstairs. Who has the key? I thought the key was always brought down to the police station.
Well, that seems to be one of the problems, somebody will go down and get it, but then somebody will make a key or give it to, or somebody else.
Those are keys that cannot be duplicated unless I call the order in. But the problem is, I pick up the key at five o'clock, I give it to Stan at six. When my team is done, he gives it to you, it's, you know, when he's done and it never gets returned.
Well, it's just too many keys, like I say, you know.
I sympathize with your problem, but if it, if something bad ever happens, it's gonna fall right back.
That's it, I mean, I, I, I was the one who gave permission to the one who, the last group to the school to come up here and went down and talked to them and said, listen, this is what we expect, very little, what we expect, the door's locked and the lights off and the heat turned down. And it was abused time and time again.
If you shut down the gym, they'll force the people to come and do something, or they won't do it, one of the other.
But that's, you know, that's who we are, you know, we don't, we, we were reluctant to deny the taxpayers who paid for this. But as Mr. Nick says, you know, crap rolls uphill and, and right, we're gonna be sitting here saying, well, you know, it's nice to be a nice guy. But how do I explain to the assessors office whose computers and pieces on the floor? That's our.
Not only that, but you mean the other side of it too, is that it's not just heat and water. I mean, in my opinion, this is a unique building because the reality is, you have people's financial documents wrapped up in here, you have people's private employee files wrapped up in here. So, so the reality is, is that if someone were to get in here, it'd be a major security breach as well, so. There's that side of it, you have to understand that they get into the treasurer's office, they get into the accountants, they get into the selectmen. Their, their privates and private information that would put the town at some serious legal risk and, and, and security issues, so.
I mean, we have.
For that reason alone, it's a unique building and that really needs to. I've heard, I gotta tell you right now, I've heard it twice in recent, in the last month, I've heard the police come up here twice to do a security check. Nine, ten o'clock at night and find the doors wide open. I've heard it on the scanner, so it is happening.
I mean, as petty as it sounds, we have people.
And I know when it gets a text message, which I don't mind, but.
But I mean, in all seriousness, the heat is, heat and, and water is my least concern.
That's minor, yeah.
It's, it's the security of the, the social security numbers, the people's financial, you know, information, you know, people's private personnel files, that's the bigger, that's your bigger problem in a building like this.
Yeah, we have people taking trash bags. As petty as that sounds, it's, it's a cost. Brian, last thing.
With all the, you know, taxes going up and whatever, you know, I really don't think you should deny the public, it's not that big of a deal to get a janitor. And, and number two, you should have a security system, okay? Living in the dark ages here, you know, I mean.
Now, we can, we can get a security system, but if there's thirty people that have access to the security system, it's not very secure.
What I'm saying, it could catch who knows what, you know, and I just think there should be a security system, that's all. And as far as using the gym, I think we should have a right and I think you guys should hire a janitor to come in on call, end of story.
I think that's what the hope is, we're gonna look for that custodial position. I don't disagree with you with regards to security, we entertained the key fob system and trying to change over some of the buildings. So we knew who was entering the building at that time, but it was costly. You know, it wasn't anything that we might present to the town at this point, because it was a lot more expensive than I thought, so.
Just, just my personal opinion, I think, I, I agree on the security issue, that there's definitely a security issue with this, you know, the content inside this building. The only thing, you know, my personal suggestion, I was just thinking about is, is if somebody had access downstairs to the gym and the hallway doors are locked, if they had access to a bathroom, that would, that would, but not in that case, right? Because the bathroom's behind the doors?
No, the bathroom's up here.
Oh, the bathroom's up here, okay.
So they have to have.
So that would be, so that would be my, my opinion, is if you had a secure area that they could be downstairs and come up, use the bathroom, but then they couldn't get in the hallways, they were locked into a certain thing, then, you know, that would be something that would work for you. But if you don't have access to that, then I agree a hundred percent with what the truth said, this is a unique building and it's.
To do paperwork and to sign this and that, because it's a lot easier than sometimes.
Right, right, exactly.
And I've been up here and I've seen, you know, a half a dozen kids running up and down the hall like it's a playground.
Right, right.
There is no adult in, in downstairs.
Not to mention the liability of.
Right.
Right, and that's what, that's what I'm saying, right. So if you don't have access to make it secure, then my personal opinion, it's not to deny anybody access, but you gotta weigh security versus, you know, the, the good deeds and that would be my opinion, and I was weighed more into the security issue, so. Just my thoughts, thank you.
So is it the board's pleasure to kind of put a hold on it till we get some answers to that?
I think that's the right thing to do, I mean, it's out there, people understand the concerns, I mean, I thank everybody for their input. But let's see who comes forward and, I mean, if there is no solution, we'll have to shut it down. But if there is a potential solution out there, I'd like to hear it.
Because there are, you know, half the people that do use it are very responsible. So like you say, we hate to punish the people that, we've had, how many movie nights here? We have never had an issue on a movie night. And that's when there is a, one of the largest groups of people running up and down. Now, you said in a selling soda in the gym, give to a little one, they're up here using the bathroom twice during the movie.
But there's more parents.
Right.
More parents and support.
Parents consistently, they probably can solve your problem, so why don't we just leave it at that?
One parent, fifteen kids, you know, coaching, I gotta go to the bathroom, coach, I gotta go to the bathroom, and he just wants to coach, yep, go ahead, and then three kids go.
It's just responsible, I let the boy scouts use the second fire, uh, Station B every Thursday night. I've never had an issue with them not locking it or turning things off, I mean, it's just, it's just certain people being responsible, so. They can prove they can do it, and there's a janitor in place, I think it's fine, but like I said, I think your bigger problem is just what you have for paperwork up here.
Okay, gentlemen.
So I make a motion to a moratorium for non-use until we have this resolved.
Town meeting, see what funding town meeting's second.
Yeah, I will agree, all in favor, aye.
Aye.
Okay, let's get through the warrants, yeah, you got another page you have.
Okay. We have warrant number sixty-three for payroll in the amount of thirty-six thousand, three hundred fifty-nine dollars and one cent.
Excuse me, John, do you want to just do as attached and provide a copy?
Yeah, by the way, we have a lot of them.
Yeah.
To go through here, so.
We'll attach it to the minutes.
I make a motion to accept the warrants as written. Attachment will be available for warrants number sixty-three to seventy-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, drawdowns and other invoices, but again, we have quite a few of those, so. We'll also do as attached because it's a one-sheeter, but there's quite a few of them to go through, so. Make a motion to accept drawdowns and other invoices as attached.
Second.
All in favor, aye.
Aye.
No business, gentlemen. John?
I'm good.
You're good, good?
I'm good, good.
Okay, I have one thing, as you both know, there's, there's some information regarding the broken window down the town hall and a couple of issues down there. If you guys wanna give your input, Becky, and see how you wanna resolve this, so.
My personal opinion is, what was broken should be repaired as it was. I mean, there was a frosted glass window that was broken. Door frame itself is.
Needs some work.
Needs some work, it's been damaged and the egress or ingress to that area is totally restricted. So I would like that whole situation dealt with. I mean, I hate to put more money into the building and fix the windows, the door, and then have it busted again because somebody else is trying to wibble something through that hallway. So to me, it's a safety concern as well as a matter of the maintenance of the building.
Besides, it's the security between the PD and the lobby.
Correct, so I, my vote would be to restore it as it was and also do some work in there.
Well, we got a price to have everything done at once, I mean, the window man is a separate, we have somebody come in and.
You need to get the door repaired and the window repaired, and we need to get a dumpster down there to get rid of some of that stuff that's.
The handicap door.
Clever, and the handicap door needs to be repaired as well.
So it's my understanding, we got a quote from Burriswell for the glass, correct?
Yes. Five hundred and forty dollars to replace a plane of gas, plane of glass.
The store will get a chance to repeat that?
She's the one who provided it.
She, okay, that's right, came from somebody, so she's aware of this, I think the glass needs to be fixed. With regards to the handicap access that you noted earlier and we discussed, um, the rot on the bottom of that door frame and that, I think she just has one person come out and get a couple of bucks. Just give us an idea of what it costs to, to, to fix this. We're not looking to replace these doors, the doors that aren't historic or whatnot, but just to get these fixed and, and, and workable and better condition, because we're kind of, we're having a mission for some of these doors. I think that's fair to say, we still have some money in that, that line, I know we can, penny on the cost. So let's give a couple of quotes and see what we can grab, but we can get the glass fixed, I mean, that looks pretty horrible, we should get that up fixed. Even at five hundred bucks, but.
You know, it's a historic building, it's safety glass, it's prevailing wage, that's where, you know, drives the cost of working on it.
But again, you know, moving forward, I'm sorry, Mark, but moving forward, if we get the custodial position approved and we're using between this building and that building, and that person's able to have the eyes and ears down there and do some cleaning at times when we need it, these things I think will be less frequent. We'll be able to have a better grip on what's actually going on down there and get a lot of the, the little tedious things done and kept up, I think, so hopefully that goes well in May for us.
Okay, the only thing I, I have is, is, uh, and I wrote the names down and I left them at the house. But I would like to, uh, extend to you, Adam, I think it reflects on you that, you know, when I had my little medical issue there a few, uh, last month, that when I went down to RFR station, PJ, Jake, and Jim Gagnon were down there, and I would like to thank them for taking care of what they had to do, because I, 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 I made a loss of words, but I, I just wanna tell you that you should be very proud of those people down there and these people ended up doing the right thing, they were professional and, uh, I don't know if I'd be here without them, so I please pass on, I know it was Paul Russell.
PJ, yeah.
And Jake and Mr. Gagnon was down there.
We appreciate it.
They, they handled it very, very professionally, I, I was quite impressed and I would just like to pass on in the public forum thank you for having staff that you do down there. Next meeting date is the nineteenth, next Tuesday.
Mr. Chairman, maybe I missed something, I haven't been able to watch any meetings lately.
When you saw.
Because there weren't any, but, yeah. Are we still, do we have comments and concerns?
Yes.
They're up next. Comments and concerns.
I thought you were getting ready to cut ours. All right, I'll wait.
No, it's comments and concerns now.
Yeah, that would.
Go ahead, Nick.
Forget me for not getting up, I got a bad back and a cold and I wasn't gonna come. First of all, that, uh, welcome back, Mark, it's nice to see you back.
Thank you very much, Nick.
I know what you've been through and welcome to the zipper club and.
Yeah, pretty intense, huh?
Things will get better, yeah. I have three things, they're all kind of compacted into one street. It's Old Westbrook Field Road. The first one is, why in God's name do we have such a mess? Dumped by Lucy Stone up all the way to the school, that. Old Westbrook Field Road is probably one of the most busy streets.
From the corner to the, to the bridge is horrible.
Yeah, and, and up further there are holes too, but that is just inexcusable. Westbrook is out when coal pack fell in there holes. I would just like to know, I know you could say it's not our responsibility because we have an elected official who does that. However, pressure would help. And is there, I see chapter money being spent out in the boonies on stuff that I wouldn't believe we could spend chapter ninety money on. That's a chapter ninety road, is there any plans in the future to surface that or are you gonna just patch all those holes and make it look like a minefield?
That I couldn't answer, I, I haven't had a conversation with Tom regarding that.
You just approved the money tonight, will, does he come in and like John O'Neil used to and say what roads he's going to do?
Yes.
Yes.
He does?
Yeah.
It's actually the board that approves the spending.
Okay, second part of Old Westbrook Field Road is someday, if you're coming down Old Westbrook Field Road on a Saturday, there's gonna be a bad accident there, not just a Saturday, but any busy day. By the time you get by the cars parked in the municipal parking lot and stick your nose out past the huge thing in front of the bank where they can have a big tag sale, you have to be out in the road to look and boy, they come through there. I, I've almost been nailed a couple of times, I don't, I, I go down Quabock Street now all the time.
Because of the bump ups you're talking there?
The buildout on the bank sidewalk and the trucks in the crash park, it's a very hazardous and mark my word, somebody's gonna very, very seriously injure them in the T-bone there. Third, I brought this up before with, with the, I don't know if it was the board or just Becky handled it. The stop sign coming from Westbrook Field to, to, onto Quabock Street, stop. About forty-five feet from that stop sign around the corner is a stop warning sign, which is illegal because it's too close. I see no need whatsoever for a stop sign coming this way. You have clear vision, you see people coming that way, they're not coming at you, I hope they see.
Just a new road you're talking about, where they redid the little corner there?
Exactly. You can see cars coming up, you can see if a car's going down. But that stop sign should be eliminated before somebody's parked there and some kid or, or somebody not paying attention comes around that corner and rear ends them. And correct me if I'm wrong, Becky, didn't the highway department agree that that was?
Right, so after you called the office, I had contacted Pioneer Valley Planning Commission, because they were on the grant and Bill Storey from Weston and Sampson who did the design on the project. And everybody pretty much agreed that, yeah, that stop sign could go and quite frankly, I thought it was gone because it's a local option.
Right.
So.
Town, you know, pretty much, I went to town and checked on the police chief.
It's one of those things, we've had, you know, issues on the bump ups when the job was, and I was always been told, I think, that once the project is done, then the town has options of doing anything. But everything has to be done according to the plan. But now that the job is over, the town does have some flexibility in eliminating or changing some of the things that we think is necessary.
That buildout from the bank forces cars parked there out into the actual, where the road used to be. Somebody is gonna.
Oh, it's a twelve-foot sidewalk. It's a twelve-foot sidewalk now.
Sidewalk, God, you could put a car in there and still have on your road.
But like I say, you know, because I, I, I ended up bringing up, you know, the, the little thing there before the road, the sign has been hit twice already. But it was the same thing, you know, you have to let the project be completed before you can end up changing it, because you're changing the, the course of the work, which is not.
I, I sure would like to see them do something with that.
So is the stop sign?
Well, as far as the stop sign goes, I'll call, call my town tomorrow. Because honestly, like I said, I thought that was already taken care of, there was an email exchange that went around, everybody agreed that it was not necessary, so I'll follow up with that.
Thank you.
Mr. Corv?
Yeah, you know, Nick's talking about the roads and whatnot, and as a taxpayer, I know in this town that the, uh, the school systems always seems to be, you know, sucking up a lot of the money. And I'm not, believe me, I'm all for education, I put myself through college and, uh, but that doesn't necessarily equate to throwing money at a school, it doesn't equate to morality or education or anything like that. And I know they wanted another nine hundred thousand above minimum contribution.
That's what the rumor is.
Yeah, I mean, I, I think you should try to begin that discussion so that people can understand, you know, that it's an issue. I mean, with the money, you know what I'm saying?
It's an issue every year, Mr. Corvall, you've been doing this for as long as I can remember, and now it, it seems to be the norm. As you know, one of my board members sat there and says, you know, now we start at the five hundred thousand mark and go up.
I know, and, and, so where's the money gonna come to fix the roads and stuff, you know, I mean, you know.
The only money we get for roads is what the state gives us.
That's what I'm saying.
Because we have very, very little excess capital to, you know, you do a quarter mile road, it costs you a quarter million dollars.
I'm, I, you know, to comment on that, I'm hopeful the residents are wise to this, because I, I made that comment last year, you know, when you spend that amount, that five hundred thousand, that is where we start this year. We're looking at that eight hundred ninety-nine thousand dollars, that is larger than our police budget, just the above minimum. And let me remind everybody, we have a required contribution of like two point five million or whatever it is, that's our requirement under the laws of Massachusetts, the above minimum is extra. It's what they need in excess to function the way they would like to function. Keep in mind, your superintendent is a hundred and sixty thousand dollars, the salary's in that budget book, there's some pretty big salaries there. I'm all for the kids and that, you know, and making sure that they're taken care of, but I also heard through our liaison that their enrollment is down by about a hundred kids, so you know, we're, we're losing students, and the cost to do business and the, the amount of their budget has gone up tremendously, and you know, they'll, they'll, they'll argue that the state's not fundamentally, and I, and I agree, they need more transportation, they've never, but I say this every year, it just keeps going higher and higher. Nine years, it used to be seventy-five thousand, we had years where we gave them nothing above minimum, now we're at almost a million, a million dollars. That's huge for this town, and that's, and that.
Go ahead.
Look, I'm just, that's gonna have a tremendous impact on the tax rate from November, a tremendous impact.
Just as, as you triggered something, you said transportation, I see the buses go by every morning, they're not full. I'll tell you, there's a steady stream of cars, steady, and the last seven come by there at fifty-five miles an hour, a lot of question. And then until they get up on top of the hill where the, they go over the top, then they, you see the brake lets all go on. There'll be more tragedy on that road too, this.
Is there been any talk as to paying numbers for the mold issue in the board?
Last I heard was, I'm sorry, John, go ahead.
Last I heard was, which was last night, is they still have not settled that up, so they're still holding money from the first contractor they had, and it's about all I know, it's still not done, so there's another couple hundred thousand dollars that could potentially hit them.
I'm sorry, and they just certified their excess and deficiency on Monday at seven hundred, at a quarter of, three quarters of a million dollars.
Three quarters of a million.
That's like our free cash, that's what they had left over from last year. So I would hope that that money's gonna be repurposed to the mold problem and help offset some of this budget deficit before they just look to us for nine hundred thousand dollars. I would say at least eighty percent of that seven hundred fifty thousand should be going back into the budget to decrease that amount. It is ludicrous to have three quarters of a million dollars left over in certified, that is a huge number, that's just extra.
Just keep asking for the rest.
But that's like, you know, Dario has said time and time again, that, you know, it's very easy to go to a meeting once a year, you get everybody pumped up, and you get everybody putting their hand up, and that's the last thing you ever think of it, but.
Until.
Six weeks later, when the tax bill comes in, and say, what are you three people doing to us?
And it's our issue, because the tax rate is what it is, and your house value is valued at what it is, and then this past year, everybody's paying an average of two hundred fifty, three hundred dollars more, and there really wasn't that much of an impact to school. We had spent last year on the town's side too, but that's gonna be huge, you're gonna see taxes like you've never seen before. I mean, we're, we're, we would probably honestly have to look at free cash and what we certify in the fall to offset the tax problem, if that's the amount. That's, that would be a realistic option, because that's a huge number for our residents. So if you thought last year's tax increase was bad, and they've doubled their amount this year, and that goes towards the budget this year, it's not gonna be any better, folks, because property values haven't increased, they're pretty much stale right now, small amount.
I hate, I hate to ask this question, but I, it's the first thing I said when I heard it, how did this happen? Did you ever get an answer other than the obvious one?
I don't know.
Mold, yeah.
Well, if you look at the numbers.
Well, I can tell you, we did get an answer, we got an answer, when, when the superintendent sat here with, I think it was Mr. Burgess, right? Or from Westbrook Field, school committee member.
Yeah.
Who stated that they admitted to us, they made a mistake in not having a maintenance director in place to maintenance the building. They sat right there and said it to us, remember? It was their fault, at a salary of maybe seventy, eighty thousand dollars a year, this could have been avoided. You know, you need to have that person in place to watch, you know, over your buildings, and to fix what they can fix without having to contract out. They honestly sat there and told us they thought it was cheaper to contract everything out, which they weren't doing, so everything just started to fail. First line item, you cut the budget for maintenance, when you need money for other things, cut the maintenance budget, and then what happens? We're gonna be three hundred thousand into, into the hole for that building?
It was a skating rink, or.
Gosh, yeah.
Maintenance just sort of, anything to do with the maintaining of, of the property?
There was such a difference in opinion from the two companies that went in there.
I'll bet.
That's what kinda shocked me, they weren't even kind of, they weren't even close, this one was, yeah, it's fine, go back in, and this one's, no, 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 you can't get in there.
That's why Maya really didn't cover it.
Right, yeah, our insurance company.
The insurance company walked away from it too, basically.
Who does that tell you?
Because we didn't do what you're supposed to.
Your issue, you neglected it.
We didn't maintain it, so we're not paying, that's what it came down.
Can we still leave that insurance company?
Maya.
Old Maya?
Yeah.
And they walked away from it?
No, no, well, yeah.
Well, small amount.
They walked away from the majority of it.
The majority of it was, no, we're not covering it.
Because it's your fault, basically, you didn't do what you were supposed to.
Preventative maintenance.
You see a leaky pipe and nobody fixes it, you paint the ceiling tile so it covers the stain on, on the ceiling tile.
How does that superintendent get hired, what's the process?
School committee?
School committee.
School committee?
They have plenty, yes.
Okay.
Last one.
Just, just, we got in the, the last meeting that I was here, there was no agreement for the chief of police, so I was just curious.
I'm not going down that road.
Oh, okay, well, I'm just gonna ask, is there a search gonna start at all, or?
We're not going down that road, that's, that's something that the board is, is, is in our current situation, I think very much.
Alright, that's fine, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay, you had enough fun, gentlemen?
Always.
Motion to adjourn. Okay, next meeting on the nineteenth, thank you all for coming. In favor, aye.